To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for this month's communication delivered by Pastor Andre Mitchell. Good evening.
Good evening. May we all bow our heads. Dear gracious heavenly Father, God, we thank you for this opportunity, we thank you for this honor, we thank you for this great city of Muncie. We pray that as we conduct businesses, as we collect together, that you would give us wisdom and clarity, that you let all things rest well in our spirits and our hearts, and we thank you for it in Jesus' name, amen.
I am very proud to award this month's citizens of the month on behalf of the City Council to Ms. Jenna Hashwood. Jenna is a lifelong Muncie resident. For the last sixteen years Jenna has served at Muncie Habitat for Humanity and currently is the Director of Impact and Programs. This role can be in the A-12 Coalition, a community development neighborhood revitalization coalition, working with residents and partner organizations in South Central and Thomas Park Heavendale Neighborhoods. As of this summer, the A-12 Coalition launched out of Muncie Habitat. Jenna continues to work with the Coalition as the Director and Open Door Health Services is the new fiscal agent administrative support partner for the Coalition. Jenna has led this collective action model through its involvement with the Habitat for Humanity Neighborhood Revitalization Learning Cohort. The learning cohort selection was a nationwide competitive application process with only ten partners. During the week of September nineteenth, all ten learning cohort sites and staff from Habitat for Humanity International will gather in Muncie for a week of learning. Jenna graduated from Ball State University in two thousand and one and serves as an alumni member of the Social Work Advisory Committee. Throughout college Jenna volunteered with a better way and upon graduation worked there for six years. In that role she launched the AOK After School program at Wilson Middle School. She has served on the Board of Directors of Teamwork for Quality Living and Second Harvest Food Bank. Jenna and her family, husband Shannon and sons Colin and Gavin, serve in their local church, Cornet United Methodist Church in various roles. Jenna could not be here today, so her son Colin is accepting this award on her behalf.
Hello, I'm Colin, Jenna's my mom. She loves what she does, I'm glad you guys appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Selby. Jenna is a wonderful asset to our communities for its selection. Uh, roll call please, Lacy.
Mr. Ingram?
In attendance.
Mr. Garrett?
Here.
Mr. Overby?
Here.
Mr. Dishman?
Present.
Mr. Green?
Present.
Mr. Polk?
Present.
Mr. Cork?
Here.
Ms. Selby?
Yes.
President Roberts?
Yes.
Uh, approval of the minutes from the August first council meeting, unless there's any corrections to be made in the minutes, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilman Ingram, seconded by Councilman Polk. Roll call please.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Overby?
Yes.
Mr. Polk?
Yes.
Mr. Cork?
Yes.
Mr. Ingram?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Selby?
Yes.
Mr. Dishman?
Yes.
President Roberts?
Yes.
Right, yes.
Any committee reports?
Uh, Mr. President, I do have for the redistricting committee. Last meeting when we talked about getting quotes, I did get two quotes. The cheapest was thirty-five hundred dollars, the other one came in at four to six thousand dollars. Um, so after talking with our council or our attorney for the council, um, I am making a motion to just keep the districts the same as they have been for the previous ten years. Just rewriting a new ordinance based on those same numbers and there will be one change because we did lose a precinct, precinct five was combined into fourteen down in District Three, and so that won't change the district any, um, so the numbers will stay the same.
Uh, you made a motion, but I don't know if the motion is necessary. Uh, I think you can just work with Council Attorney Gibson and ordinance lives together, we'll hear that if you, you know, I mean, obviously all of the committee members are here, so I don't allow any discussion of any discussions that we had to prevent the call for another meeting of that committee. If there's anything further from any of the additional committee members, happy to entertain. Seeing here in none, uh, just the way that ordinance. Thank you, Councilman Polk. Any other committee reports? Hearing none. Uh, we don't have any appointments to boards and commissions this month. Uh, we'll move into, we don't have any ordinances previously introduced either. Uh, no new ordinance this last month, but we do have our next new ordinance this month, and we'll start with ordinance twenty-seven dash twenty-two.
Ordinance twenty-seven dash twenty-two, an ordinance to vacate a portion of Fifth Street, AKA Anthony Street, in the city of Muncie, Delaware County, Indiana.
So a motion for introduction of ordinance twenty-seven dash twenty-two. Motion was made by Councilman Ingram, seconded by Councilman Green. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on ordinance twenty-seven dash twenty-two? Hello, Gibson. Could you mind moving that microphone back? Thank you.
John LaRue for the petitioners. Are there any questions of the council council? I'd try and address those.
Any questions from the council, Mr. LaRue? Mr. LaRue?
Correct.
Yeah, he's correct.
Yes. Anything from the audience? Again, this is for introduction, thank you, Mr. LaRue. There's nothing further, uh, all in favor of introducing ordinance twenty-seven dash twenty-two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty-two.
Ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty-two, an ordinance for appropriations and tax rate, Muncie Sanitary District, twenty twenty-three budget.
So a motion for introduction on ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty-two.
Second.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilwoman Selby, seconded by Councilman Polk. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty-two?
Good evening, Nina Cox, Prime Commander for the Muncie Sanitary District. I'm just here to introduce sanitation budget and if you have any questions at this time.
Any questions from the council, from the council? Anything from the audience?
Just one question, I hadn't had a chance to read this ordinance. Is there a rate increase on the sanitation for the residents of Delaware, Delaware County City of Muncie?
Probably not.
For the sewer rates?
The salaries or the cost?
How much I pay each month?
Uh, well, this has nothing to do with it, but no.
Okay.
Councilwoman Selby, any questions?
Yes, Ms. Cox, could you explain to us how the inflation has affected the budget at the Muncie Sanitary District and where it's represented?
Um, some of the increases in regards to the budget is utilities. Obviously, some of the inflation has gone up, utilities, gas, oils, basically to run those dump trucks takes a lot of gas. Um, the disposal, excuse me, disposal services, they have gone up in fees, so we've had to increase the budget in the fees. And really, anything else really hasn't gone up, um, as far as, I mean, a little bit like cards and that kind of stuff, but overall it's mainly disposal fees, utilities.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions from the council? Anything further from the audience? Seeing, hearing none. Uh, all those in favor of introducing ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty-two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Ordinance twenty-nine dash twenty-two.
Ordinance twenty-nine dash twenty-two, an ordinance of the city of Muncie and Muncie Chapter Ninety-three, Beech Grove Cemetery to the City of Muncie Code of Ordinance.
Is there a motion for introduction of ordinance twenty-nine dash twenty-two?
Second.
Motion was made by Councilman Garrett, seconded by Councilman Ingram. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on ordinance twenty-nine dash twenty-two? Good evening, Mr. Waters.
Troy Waters, Superintendent Beech Grove Cemetery, uh, here to introduce the asking for appropriations and asking for approval for Beech Grove Cemetery.
This is, uh, you're gonna be up next with the additional appropriations on this one. Uh, this is the, some rule changes, uh, the.
Oh, the rule change, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, oh, no worries, you're back to back on these things.
We got another paper out here.
And this is just simply changing, and I don't want to speak for you, but this is simply just changing, uh, some of the timeline in which the board makes decisions and does evaluations of superintendent and such.
At the gym, it had the twenty-nine hundred.
Oh, alright.
So this is the one for the, give me a second here.
It's your first time before us, we'll give you a little raise.
Alright, uh. This is the old ordinance prohibiting dogs from Beech Grove Cemetery, and we're asking to change this, that dogs may enter the grounds of Beech Grove Cemetery so long as the dog always remain unbleached under control of the person bringing the dog into the grounds.
Which I think is wonderful, so it's a beautiful place to go and walk your dog and sing.
Get a lot of people in there walking and, uh, like I told you, every day we got a lady comes all the way from Marion, every couple weeks just to walk her dog and get the beauty of the cemetery.
This also covers, uh, previously the way the Board of Trustees would evaluate the superintendent and do so every year in April. Uh, so what, what this ordinance is doing is changing that, uh, rather than in April, it's doing it in January, is that correct?
November.
No, November. Uh, so it'll be after the season, it didn't make much sense to do so before the season started to evaluate the superintendent. So the board voted unanimously and have asked us to make that change, uh, so that's, that's where you have the ordinance before. Is there any questions from anyone on the camera, Mr. Waters? I have one. How many people have you had trying to hunt in Beech Grove Cemetery?
I've not, I've not had any, but I've had some offer to come in and do the groundhogs. We don't like, we're overwhelmed with groundhogs.
Well, I saw that and I was like, has there been a problem in the past?
Well, you, you figure a lot of these ordinances have been early nineteen hundreds, I mean, you look back and.
Yeah, yeah, Council Attorney Gibson will address some of that with us. Any more questions for Mr. Waters before Mr. Gibson? Thanks, Troy.
So the other two changes, uh, one that, um, Councilman Ingram, pit dogs was hunting has always been prohibited, uh, but it also prohibiting carrying of firearms in that same section. So we're simply, um, removing or amending that because state law now prohibits, uh, and preempts any regulation on carrying of firearms. So we're just simply amending that section, not adding a new prohibition on hunting, that's always been there. Uh, in addition, um, there was a section prohibiting damage to tombstones, uh, and other items in the cemetery, that is covered by state law, and so we're simply removing that provision. Both of those were recommended in the municipal updates, um, we've all been there since nineteen sixty-eight, and simply removing those.
Thank you, Gibson. Anything else from the council? Anything from the audience? All those in favor of introduction of ordinance twenty-nine dash twenty-two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Ordinance thirty dash twenty-two.
Ordinance thirty dash twenty-two, an ordinance for additional appropriations, Beech Grove Cemetery.
A motion for introduction of ordinance thirty dash twenty-two.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilman Polk, seconded by Councilman Ingram. Anyone here wishing to speak on ordinance thirty dash twenty-two? Good evening again, Mr. Waters.
Good evening, Troy Waters, Superintendent Beech Grove Cemetery. Now, thanks, I'm on the right one this time.
We got you, go.
Here just asking for approval on appropriations, uh, for Beech Grove Cemetery. Total amount, uh, two hundred and nine thousand dollars. And everything on this, I don't know, uh, I think I said, do you want to leave, I don't know if I sent everybody this. Whenever, over everything at the cemetery since I've been there and this stuff here is desperately need, needed to perform. The cemetery runs on a nineteen eighty-five Ford five fifty-five backhoe. That's not running, it don't run very well. And they've already had to reschedule a funeral for a bride that had family in town. They had to reschedule for, I think it was the following Tuesday because the backhoe went down, they ended up borrowing over the sanitary district to make it happen, while they were in the parts for the backhoe. And I hate to say it happened, that was before I got there, but, uh. Mowers, I think the last mowers, I think it was two thousand and ten, I don't know. I think that's what, when I look, two thousand and ten. They're constantly welding pieces on the decks, uh, every day the mechanic spins up into a mower belt, and they're just getting wore out. So we've got quotes on the two brand new mowers in this, and, uh. They have to put a Kubota U T B on there. When they're digging the graves, they, when they can, they got a single axle dumper, if they got a back in there. And since I've been there, I've been out there helping them a few times, and it's pretty close to rubbing stones. Sometimes we have to move headstones out of the way just to get in there to dig another grave, to get the dirt out. They've got a trailer that will fit up, fit behind this, where they can pull, and the biggest part of the graves without having to go through all that. This won't tear the ground up like a one ton dump truck will, and it's versatile, you can get different equipment, we're working with stovels, brooms, you'll have, you can even have electronic, uh, electronics. I guess hydraulics on the front, but the springs on electric, uh, and that'll be a big benefit for them. So the biggest part is, well, the backhoe's the biggest expense, but the building repairs there, any, some of it came out this weekend, but we've got the inside mortared up. But there's parts of the outside of the chapel and the office building that built nineteen twenty-one, that's, wouldn't take too long for it to start falling down. That building's on the National History Store, Durant Street, and, uh, yeah, we're not gonna get something done before real soon. It's gonna be in bad, bad shape and cost a lot of money. Uh, went through and got quotes, we'll have to do that again because the time limit of getting this approved, but that's how I come up with, uh. Fifty-five thousand dollars for the house outside of the building, and I'm still waiting on one quote. Uh, had four people come in and two of them's got the quotes in, and they're all right in their range, and that's a tough one, re-mortaring everything on the outside of the whole chapel. There's a couple spots we want to do as a purchase, it is, just as you walk in the front, front door of the office, if you look at that corner, maybe it's bad shape if we do it any time. Basically, that's it, and I'd like to ask for approval on this preparation, so we get some things done.
Any questions for Mr. Waters?
Mr. Waters, I just need to, um, kind of understand the numbers here. So the seventy-five thousand other services and charges, that's for the building repair on the outside and inside, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then the one thirty-four thousand, one thirty-four thousand, that's for that Kubota, the trailer, the backhoe, and two mowers.
Yes, that'd be, uh, they put that in the mowers and vehicles funds, and that's for the backhoe, which is seventy thousand.
Okay.
The Kubota will run, uh. Little under seventeen thousand, we're close, sixteen something, and, uh, the mowers, uh, two of them together are thirty thousand. One of them is a sixty, sixty-one inch with a forty horse, uh, engine on it, and it's a higher build solution than we got now, so it should take more wear off of the rest of the motor. So, so yes, you're correct.
Hey, but you mentioned a truck also. You got a seventy-seven year old one ton, were you replacing that as well?
No, that's a, I was talking about our, this Kubota, the use of it, if you get out of it, because right now we've got a two thousand and eight, I think, dump truck. That perhaps in the back end over the graves and, I think, it carries a lot, a lot of, they have to come back from landscape, and it's so big, sometimes we have to move things around, and, uh, this Kubota is smaller. And it's being more versatile when you're getting around.
And the trailer you were going, were just also in that?
We've, we already own the trailer.
You had a trailer, is it a dump trailer?
Yes. Uh, for sure, they use it all the time, uh, for dirt and everything when they can.
Councilman Ingram? You replaced the two mowers, how many mowers do you normally, I mean, how, how many do you have in your, your equipment?
There are, uh, there are seven mowers there. One of them's more or less a parts mower, it, it will run, the belts won't stay on it for ten minutes, the decks, the decks wore out. Uh, another one that we run every day, first thing in the morning, we fill it up with oil, and lunchtime, he's got to fill it up again. The third one, I don't know how many times they, like I said, they're done, they're welding on the deck, uh, they're just wore out. No, they're still, some of them's still mobile, but not blowable. And there's a lot of repair, daily repairs going on to keep them going.
I imagine you do quite a bit of mowers.
Yes, we got at least.
Throughout the whole week?
We got at least four running every day, and sometimes we'll run six, you know, I rotate the people back from weed eating and trimming to mowing, and we got four that's everyday mowing.
Do you think two's gonna be enough to get you?
Uh, that's what I'm gonna shoot for now. I, we will need, need more, but right now, I think if we get two, that's replacing two of our main mowers. The sixty-one inch, we run one of them, and, uh, the next, next one's a fifty-three inch, and those are the main two. And I think with that, you know, maybe after the first year, next, next spring we can come back and try to upgrade a little bit more, but I think right now that would put us in good shape.
There are council, wait, Councilman Cork, and then we'll come back to you.
Yeah, if you don't mind, send an overview of, of the ask, what you're, what you're looking at doing, and then second, could you explain to us, um, where these funds are coming?
Uh, I have to mention, they're coming, coming out of our cash flow.
What happened was, uh, as money, because Beech Grove Cemetery is part of this, it's part of the tax levy, none of their funds are referred in funds, so those funds don't revert back to the general fund. So the money that they have, they've got three hundred and something thousand in one account, they've got five hundred something in another account. Uh, that money, uh, has been collecting in these accounts for many years, so they've got a little over, is it nine hundred thousand dollars available on funds?
And this, this is coming out of one, five hundred seventy-four thousand, and my right is, is just a root of cash.
I just thought it'd be best for public.
Sure.
What, you want me to send out?
Oh, yeah, just a, a list of, you know, these, these mowers and these items that you.
You want the actual mowers or just what we're doing?
Just the high level, here's, here's the tally, you know, I don't need the quotes or anything, but just where you're looking. I've not seen anything, all, all I have is what you're asking in total.
Go ahead, give me that.
Yeah.
I don't know if this is exactly what you want. Do you have a question?
I took your.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Anything from the audience?
First of all, I'd like to thank this gentleman here for finding the nine hundred thousand dollars that was somewhere out there in the checking accounts and putting it to use. He's gonna use two hundred and ninety thousand out of the nine hundred thousand. I would, have you, I'll address the council and then he can answer. I think the backhoe is a little rough on the terrain out there, and I'd like to see a track excavator, big enough to dig the graves. It would be less cleanup, uh, less landscaping, because the big old backhoes are, are really heavy, and I'd like to see him spend the extra money and maybe get the excavator instead of a backhoe.
All right.
Thank you. I'm tired of operating engineers and stuff, so know, know a little bit about equipment, and I suggested the same thing when I went there, and, uh, I've noticed other cemeteries, you know. But you don't, you don't get an excavator with an extended hose, and you might have to set a vault right over here, where they have a vault, it's another eighteen, eighteen thousand dollars. So I agree with you, excavator would be great, but again, it's just not a versatile machine for digging the graves. And I've never, not saying that hasn't happened, but I've never seen a excavator actually digging a grave. I'm an excavator operator, uh, by trade, and, you know, I know you, the, the extended hose you reach, never name, that, that's the, what I call it. So I have to investigate that. The backhoe we're looking at is a used one, it's a two thousand and eleven Caterpillar four twenty, four wheel drive. It's got the horse on the front, you know, they can use it to haul the bolts, anything else they need, it's got the extended hose, uh, it's just got three thousand hours on it. It's been CAT certified, and a brand new one that's gonna run this a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-five thousand, and, uh, when I found this one, I was later. I think the appropriations written, maybe two eighty-nine, or I subtracted all that, and they, they've got this backhoe on hold until we find out if we're gonna get this to the cemeteries.
Thanks for mentioning that you visited other cemeteries, I think it's always wise to include best practices from how others are doing. I think it's always wise to include best practices from how others are doing in, in your planning process, so I appreciate that.
I kind of researched quite, quite a bit through this, I mean, I worked on this for a long time. Sally Joe, the secret president, she was out there, she, she knows, Jeff knows what I've worked on, and it's been, it was once, and I just threw a bunch of stuff down on paper, so... I've removed things, and I've added things, and, so...
Let me ask you something, Mr. Waters, again. So you need the backhoe, the backhoe that you have now is, is hitting this.
It is hitting this, that's a good one.
I'm getting, right, I'm guessing that the mowers are going to be of great benefit immediately.
They're, if we don't get them now, you're going to need them probably next, like I said, the one, you're putting oil in the morning, oil in, in the evening. And the mowers themselves are not cheap, so to go out and spend, I don't know, I'm guessing three or four thousand to get a motor on a wore-out mower. And these are the ones we priced, are the same ones, the street part of the kids. Mr. Donnie Wright, he's actually hooking up with the guy, uh, Bengals, their repairs, uh, four-wheel suspension, seat suspension. It takes a lot of wear and tear off the machine by having that. Like I said, you've got a higher horse motor, so it's going to take less horsepower, power to run everything. Less power, I should say. And if we don't get them now, we're going to need them this spring, and it might be broken down, and not be able to move, we can use it if we don't have it.
No threat at this point of losing out on the deal for the backhoe? There's no threat of losing out on the deal for the cabota or the mowers?
Dean Vizzle is, I told him, I called him tomorrow, let him know how the night went, and I told him it would be next month's meeting before everything was approved. And he had them in stock, and he said he was going to try to hold them, if not, he will get, get them over. And I think it would be good to finish the season at, maybe, you never know what's going to happen. Like I said, the one mower, it's run, ran every day, and it does the biggest part of the west end, the cemetery. And it's the main mower over there. And it could blow up tomorrow. You're putting money and time in these, so we, we need mowers, spending on that.
Mary, did you have anything?
Yes.
Sorry.
I didn't make it sound right. Uh, I stopped out here just, what, less than two weeks ago? He's out there working with the guys. He's not a sit-in-the-truck or sit-in-the-office worker. And out of all the years that I've been going to Beech Grove Cemetery, I've got very close friends and family there. This is the best I have seen it look in at least, at least ten years. And when you compare it with where my, the rest of my family is out in Elmridge, it's a multimillion dollar owned cemetery, and Beech Grove looks better. So what's wrong with this picture? They need their money, they need to be able to get their stuff, help this guy out, and help the workers out. You know, I've talked to the workers, and they're so tired and the machines break them. So let's get them fixed, let's get them, let's get them going, they've got the money, let's get it going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Is there anything further from the council? Anything else from the audience?
I do, I would like to add one thing, and like I said, I went through and adjusted this, take the prices, especially in the backhoe. I'm not, have no plans of draining our account, so we don't have no backup money. We, I went through, this is stuff we need to run the operations here, and we could, we could have more and have it in there for... In case we need something else, we already had it, but this is stuff we need, and if we need more later, we'll send you back up there and make them work.
Very good. Mr. Easter, did you have something?
Of course. Something that, uh, which we now is discussing, although I agree, is you've got to have equipment besides that chapel that has been there for more than a century. Something to be done with the fence. Uh, there's been one hole in it for over a year, and I know there's only a few people that do that kind of stone and iron work. And then I think last spring, somebody else ran through it. And that's, you know, every day when you go down fieldwork, if you've got that kind of cash, uh, you need to get some people to fix that. Because that's a, a very expensive piece of that old property that continues to falter, because it's not, it's not only routine maintenance, but you can't even fix the holes.
Well, I think Mr. Waters is way ahead of Mr. Easter. Yeah, there's, uh, yeah.
Got a, got a comment on that. Uh, the section he's talking, talking about the car for any routinely, that is an insurance, uh, car hit it. But it's an insurance paid bill, they are working on it. I've had to go in there and push the company to get back in and work, work on it, but they, they're back in and working on it now. And that's another thing I will do, is push to get it done, and I told them, I said, if it's not done soon, we'll contact the insurance and tell them they need to get somebody else in there. I've got a, one quote in on each filler, that two replace one, and it's a little under ten thousand dollars for each bit. I've got quotes coming in on sections of fence, we have different ideas to do it. I've kind of, would rather go with a stamped concrete, where it would be solid, and see how that turns out. But I'm giving quotes both ways, but five hundred thousand dollars wouldn't, I don't know where he went. Wouldn't replace much, uh, much of that fence. We are going to work on, we're going to work on the bad sections first, but right now, the chapel and the building is more important. You know, we can, the fence is standing, except for the parts, the cars, the hill, and the building could fall.
Council, something?
Uh, Troy, thank you for the detailed Beech Grove Cemetery appropriations. Here it says fence twenty thousand, could you explain that? Because you said something about insurance, and then there's...
That's two pillars there.
What piece of...
That do need repair. One of them has crumbled down, and it's bent. Another one is probably going to have to be disassembled, more or less redone again, so it's the same thing as the, the, I used, the one quote I got in. Like I said, the other two was, people just not even returning quotes back to the building, and that's, that's hard. I mean, you can't go towards them, then, or your quotes back to you, so I've got to call us into more. But we know it's going to be in the neighborhood of ten thousand dollars for each column.
I'm sorry, I just didn't make the association between the wood fence and the columns, so you explained that, thank you.
Yes, the columns or pillars are what's over, you know, you've got your rock fence on the bottom, you've got your iron, and then the column, the iron is up to the column.
Thank you.
Anything further from the council? Anything, anything else from the audience? All those in favor of introducing ordinance thirty dash twenty-two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you, Mr. Waters. Ordinance thirty-one dash twenty-two.
Ordinance thirty-one dash twenty-two, an ordinance of the City of Muncie adding chapter one oh three to the City of Muncie Code of Ordinances to block, to establish a procedure for the naming or renaming of city facilities.
Is there a motion for introduction of ordinance thirty-one dash twenty-two? Motion was made by Councilman Garrett, seconded by Councilman Ingrid. Good evening, Mr. Wilson.
Good evening, I prepared this ordinance at the request of Councilwoman Selby, and it just simply puts forth a procedure for the naming or renaming of public facilities, uh, which would include buildings, parks, recreational facilities, statues, and monuments. Um, and I think the intent here was just simply to have a, a public forum, uh, to allow for, uh, public input in the event that, uh, one of these city facilities will be named or renamed. Um, it also requires that the sponsor of a request, uh, prepare a written justification, uh, for the name change and provide that in advance. Um, so just to be clear, anything, uh, any naming or renaming would require city council approval, and then any city park or, uh, park facility would also require, in addition to the city council, the park will approve.
Any questions for Mr. Wilson? Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance thirty-one dash twenty-two?
Hadi Barber, real quick, thank you. That's all I got to say, is thank you.
Now, Mr. Bilberry?
Hello, uh, Christopher Bilberry, I just thought maybe you guys could also maybe consider an amendment to put in a time period, um, on something like this? For example, um, you know, a generation or something like that, whatever you want to consider that, fifty years, sixty years. I feel like if we have a property, let's just say we have a, a park that I want to go and take care of for the next however long I'm alive. Um, and at some point, the city comes together and calls this little piece of ground, ground, Bilberry Park or whatever. I don't feel like, that would probably not happen. Thank you, Rob. I love it. Um, I'm waiting for my key, I'm waiting for my key, that's what I'm asking, I'll get a key to the city eventually. Anyways, um, but the point being, John Doe Park, I don't feel like, uh, the direct descendants of Mr. Doe should have to be faced with, uh, a decision like that, because whatever the reason, I just feel like that puts direct descendants in a very awkward position. Um, you know, we've got, you know, Tim Smith is coming in and going to give lots of money to John Doe Park, uh, here, which is great. But you have like a, you know, son or daughter, husband or wife, that would be dealing with this. How's the, that direct descendant going to say no to something like that, even if they truly feel like they might not want to? So if we can figure out some kind of a timeframe, fifty, sixty years, unless it's just absolutely, you know, apparent or whatever, but that's something you guys might consider. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bilberry. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance thirty-one dash twenty-two? Anything, anything further from the council? All those in favor of introduction of ordinance thirty-one dash twenty-two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Ordinance thirty-two dash twenty-two.
Ordinance thirty-two dash twenty-two, an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates, budget twenty twenty-two.
Motion for introduction of thirty-two dash twenty-two. Bill, it's made by Councilman Green, seconded by Councilman...
I will, I will give it.
Anyone here wishing to speak on ordinance thirty-two dash twenty-two?
Who made the price for our general manager, I'm just due to answer any questions.
Is there any questions for this price clerk? Anything from the audience on ordinance thirty-two dash twenty-two? Seeing, hearing none, all those in favor of introduction, ordinance thirty-two dash twenty-two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you. Thank you. Ordinance thirty-three dash twenty-two.
Ordinance thirty-three dash twenty-two, an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates, Muncie City Budget twenty twenty-two.
Sir, motion for introduction of ordinance thirty-three dash twenty-two. Motion was made by Councilwoman Selby, seconded by Councilman Polk. Uh, if it pleases the council, I'd like to hold off on any discussions regarding the budget tonight. I sent you all an email today with, uh, and to the finance committee, I should say, which includes all nine members of council, with potential dates for two to three finance committee meetings over the next several weeks. Uh, there will be plenty of opportunity to discuss the budget, uh, including each department's individual budget during those meetings, and we'll hold a special meeting of the council in mid to late October to vote on. Uh, those finance committee meetings will be live streamed and will be open to the public, uh, with the tentative dates that I've sent out today. And I've received confirmation from five of the council members. Uh, tentatively, the dates are Wednesday, September twenty-eighth at six P M, Wednesday, October fifth at six P M, and then Wednesday, October nineteenth at six P M. Uh, we wanted to avoid, every school system in the county has fall break the week of October tenth, and I don't want to interfere with anyone's travel plans, any department heads, or anyone that has planes during that time. Uh, we have to pass the budget by November one, so this will provide us enough time to be able to go through the budget, uh, department by department, and, uh, have it open for public consumption. Uh, if everyone could please let me know, just at their earliest convenience, if they're available on those dates, I'll get with Lacy, and we'll get together the agendas for each, and then I can invite the department heads to show up when they appear on the agenda. Uh, is there any objections to, uh, to, to delaying discussions until those finance committees? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor of introducing ordinance thirty-three dash twenty-two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you all. We'll have that posted, uh, as soon as I get confirmation, I'm hopeful I have confirmation by middle of this week. And we'll make sure everyone is aware when those finance meetings will, will take place. That is it for new ordinances, and we'll move into resolutions, resolution twenty dash twenty-two.
Resolution twenty dash twenty... Resolution twenty dash twenty-two, common counsel of the City of Muncie, Indiana, preliminary economic revitalization area of Resolution Real Estate Tax Abatement, A D K Management, Inc.
Is there a motion for approval of resolution twenty dash twenty-two?
Second.
Motion was made by Councilman Ingrid, seconded by Councilman Polk. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on resolution twenty dash twenty-two?
Good evening. Good evening, Scott Nick with the seniors of Muncie LLC, um, here to answer any questions on this resolution.
Is there any questions from the council itself?
Uh, Mr. President, it might be a request more than a question. Thank you, Mr. Mitch, you weren't, uh, present in the last council meeting, but I did make it public that, and I wouldn't, since you're here, I want to mention it again, that I would appreciate a quote, at least one quote, for each improvement you are going or you intend of making. Uh, so I have numbers, so when it comes to council and the tax abatement committee, we can kind of evaluate the number of years you're requesting and the amount for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anything from the audience? Resolution twenty dash twenty-two. If there's nothing further, roll call, please.
Mr. Ingram?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. O'Gree?
Yes.
Mr. Dishman?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Polk?
Yes.
Mr. Cork?
Yes.
Ms. Selby?
Yes.
Russell Ross?
Yes.
Nine misses.
Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-two.
Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-two, a resolution for transfer of appropriations EMS file.
Looking for approval of resolution twenty-one dash twenty-two, dash was made by Councilman Green, seconded by Councilman Garrett. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on resolution twenty-one dash twenty-two? Good evening, Mr. Wright?
Good evening, Troy took my thunder away, lost ordinance on the budget, so great to hear you and I talk today, and all those, I appreciate that. Um, this is, uh, a resolution, just, uh, transferring funds from one line in the EMS fire budget, uh, from the paramedic over to other services and charges, um, to take care of some, uh, pretty, uh, high bills that we have received in, actually, from last year, so, uh, through Heartland. Or additional charges for this transfer of money between, uh...
Any questions for Mr. Wright? Um, so this is just a transfer within the department's different high items?
Yes.
There's no new money?
No.
Anything else from the council? Must be all, will be receiving from Heartland?
Absolutely, this is, this is it.
Any further questions? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, roll call. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Cork?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Ingram?
Yes.
Mr. Dishman?
Yes.
Mr. Polk?
Yes.
Mr. Ogbie?
Yes.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-two.
Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-two. A resolution of the City of Muncy encouraging the Indiana General Assembly to take further action to protect the rights of tenants.
Sir, motion for approval of resolution twenty-two dash twenty-two. Motion was made by Councilman Garrett, seconded by Councilman Ingram. I brought this resolution forward, so I'll talk a little bit about it. After hearing from quite a few of my constituents regarding substandard housing conditions throughout my district, especially but throughout the city at large, I've seen photos, read stories from literally hundreds of people, all with similar issues and all dealing with the same property management company. I want to be very clear, I know there are great landlords in this community, I know there are great property management companies in this community as well, and who go above and beyond in service to their tenants, and to those individuals and to those companies, I want to say thank you. Thank you very, very much. I have, I also want them to know that I, with this resolution and hoping that the state will act, I have absolutely zero interest in complicating how they do their business, and I would never dream of penalizing anyone who's living up to their obligations. Now, this isn't a new issue for Muncy, and I've spoken to our council attorney many, many times on ways we can address these issues locally. Every thought and idea that I have, that others have, always, always hits a roadblock with state statute, limiting what political subdivisions can do to address it. Many of the things that we can do, because there are some things that we can do within state statute, we just simply cannot afford it because, again, of restrictions within state statute. Those restrictions make any efforts on take cost prohibitive. The resolution that is before us tonight just simply asks the Indiana General Assembly to take action to protect tenants that are living in substandard housing and dealing with problematic landlord or management companies that refuse to comply with their obligations under law. With that, I'll entertain any conversation or discussion from the council. I have a copy of the state statute with me, with, I only brought one copy, my printer home was running a little on paper, so I apologize, but I will email this out to the council with some highlighted sections that are of particular interest to this council and this local government, so I will send those out to you all tomorrow for you to take a look, but I think we all understand what the issues are and the issues we face. Our hands are tied quite literally, and, you know, I had so many phone calls, so many emails, seen so many things on social media, I'm not here to call anybody out, I'm not here to say, you know, anybody's, I just don't want to get into that. The real problem rests with legislation that we need to be able to provide, or that the state can provide us some tools to be able to address this at a local level. So with that, I'll entertain anything from the council.
I was a building inspector for almost ten years for the city, and I've seen some unspeakable housing issues. We did unsafe walk-throughs, I said at last meeting, too. If you are, you're living in a, and you think that you're below substandard housing, please call the Building Commissioners' office. We do unsafe walk-throughs. We have a minimal housing code, they'll go through, and they will literally check off of the minimal housing code to make sure that your rental property, where you're at, is up to par to what we want in the city to be a rental property. And if it isn't, then they're going to get tagged, they're going to have so many days to fix it, and if not, then they'll be in an unsafe housing. That gives us some sort of proof with the state that this is going on, this is how much cases we have, there are bad cases to worse. I partnered with the Health Department, I worked with Jeremy quite a bit going through all those houses, so just please call the Building Commissioners' office. They'll get out there, they'll do walk-throughs, they'll tag it, they'll tell, you know, they'll tell you what you need and tell you what, you know, where you're good and where you're not good. Just, they are, there's eight people up there that are phenomenal at what they do. They go through those houses. We have an electrical inspector, we have a plumbing inspector, we have an HVAC inspector, and then we have Becky that does everything from framing to anything else. So anything, there's not a person at the Building Commissioners' office that cannot help you with any of your housing issues. So please give them a call if you do not think that you're being treated fairly, or that you think that you're living in substandard housing, so please give them a call.
Very good, Councilman Polk.
I just agree with, totally agree with what Jeff has said, what Brandon has said. What I have been getting flooded with, with emails from not only Ball State students, but other people that are renting not only just in Muncy, but all of Delaware County, that there is a, there is a big issue. I grew up in the neighborhood on, right off University on Dill Street, back, in fact, my parents had student housing, and back then, they had to go through Ball State, and Ball State would send somebody out to inspect your house before you could even have students living in the house. And I know the state, with state statutes and everything, they can't go back to that, but I do think that something needs to be done from the state level, and I did notice we have our state representative in the audience. Hopefully you're hearing us and can look at you and something with your cohorts down there, that would be great, it would help out a lot of, a lot of problems, that solves some of those problems.
Well, and I could say that was one of the first people I reached out to, was Representative Sue Arrington, and I sent that resolution along to her. My plan is, if this passes this evening, to share it with other second-class cities around the state and ask them to adopt their own resolution, calling on the Indiana General Assembly. I've already spoken with several council members from several of those cities, and they intend to do the same, and to also encourage them to reach out to their state representatives to try to put some pressure on to allow local governments to finally be able to do something to address this issue. It's beyond, and I just don't know if they don't see it, if they don't know it's there, I don't want to speculate, but we just, we need some action. Councilwoman Selby?
Yes, I sit on the board of the Muncy Human Rights Commission. We are taking, as if, if I may speak, on behalf of the Human Rights Commission, we are taking a lot of complaints. We encourage everyone to get on the city's website and turn and file a report. Ms. Yvonne Thompson, our director, is very, very active, very diligent about taking that information, and she is sending it straight to the Attorney General's office. And I can't give you too much details about anything, but there's, the Attorney General's offices already in contact with one of those tenants, and they're interested. So anyone in the community, if you have housing issues, I think this is one way we can tackle it. Please, get on the city's website, Muncy Human Rights Commission, file your report online, and Ms. Thompson, and we have an officer in the Human Rights Commission who specializes in housing. And even if our hands are tied on the state level, we have an Attorney General, obviously is listening. So let's keep those complaints coming in, and I think the more complaint we send, or you can just go straight to the Attorney General's website and file your complaint there. I think the more volume of complaint we have, the more it's going to draw his attention. And I have been in communication with his office, they just need the numbers to come in, they need the complaints to come in, so there is a case. So I just want to let you know they're listening. At least that route is kind of working, so that's what I wanted to share.
Councilwoman Selby, is there anything further from the council? Anything from the audience?
Good evening, I'm Sue Arrington. I reside at thirty-two hundred Westbrook Drive, and I am the state representative for District Thirty-four in the House of Representatives, and that is basically all of Muncy. First of all, Representative Robinson, I want to, Councilman Robinson, I want to thank you for offering this resolution. And I think you hit the nail on the head when you bring it back to the General Assembly, because that's the body that has tied the hands of local government to deal with landlord issues. I think most anybody would say there needs to be a balance between the rights of tenants and the rights of landlords. But Indiana, our state law has skewed the rights very heavily toward the landlords, and leaves really next to nothing that local government can do. And where do these disputes occur? They don't occur at the state Capitol, they occur at our local cities and towns, and it sounds like even maybe in the counties. So that's where remedies need to be looked at, with the government that is closest to the problem, and yet that's not what state government has done. I know in 2020, we passed a, not all of us voted for it, but a bill passed that really finished the job of handcuffing local government in this issue. The governor, in fact, vetoed that bill, and the next year, the legislature overrode the governor's veto. Now, I've agreed with the governor, I voted to sustain his veto, but in Indiana, the governor's veto powers are very weak, it only takes a simple majority to overturn it. So I am hoping that what you are doing, that the council will agree with you and pass this resolution, and that you mentioned that you would like to take this to other second-class cities, I'm sure Muncy's not the only one dealing with this. So along with what Councilwoman Selby is doing with the Attorney General, hopefully we can get enough legislators who understand that this is, these are local issues that need to be addressed locally. The state government can't come in and pass a law that deals with, strictly with Muncy. We need to have it so that each local government can do what they, they need to do. Vidi Varami had planned to come tonight, but she had a meeting that's running late, so she asked me to express her concerns. The company that brought this resolution about also rents to some of the new neighbors from Afghanistan, and some of them are having the same problems that students were protesting about on Saturday. So it's not just students, and I think as Councilman Polk mentioned, it's not just people in one section of Muncy. As I've talked with my constituents, I've found people complaining about, you know, landlords that don't fix the roof, don't fix the bathrooms, even though they're asked time and time again. So I'm glad you're taking this action, and I hope that the council will do it too. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Arrington. Anyone else from the, good evening, ma'am, if you would please identify yourself.
My name is Heidi Ron, I'm a former tenant of South State University Middletown Properties, which is the only unit on the property of August the second. It's not only the issues of the deplorable conditions, when I first moved in, I was underneath a different landlady, we also have the invasion of the maintenance personnel, I'm an elderly person who lives by myself, you know, generally my door is blocked, but they do tend to walk in on single women, and, you know, they don't call 24 hours ahead of time, our safety is at risk, not only, like I said, not only the deplorable conditions, but the safety of us single women, and, you know, there's other issues besides, you know, that need to be addressed. You know, their bogus fees and everything like that. I have addressed the General Assembly, I turned in my complaint a third month ago.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Good evening, Mr. Wright.
Hello, my name is Seth Brown, living twelve oh six Hoppin Avenue. I just kind of want to detail my story with this company that brought this along, or not. I rented in an apartment, which is kind of a basement unit of this house over on Alameda Avenue, which is right across from the bridge. Basically, issues I had are, our toilet broke, and we didn't have, so we had one toilet house, and we didn't have access to a toilet for three weeks because the company wouldn't come back to do this. There's no, no way to force them to do it. They, I mean, I ended up, we had to go over to a neighbor's house, so neighbors gave us a key, let us go in every day to use that. We had issues with our shower, we would have feces swept out of the shower. That happened a couple of times, and that happened around the same time the toilet broke. And we had to go to our neighbor's house again and take a shower. Luckily, we had good neighbors, and we were able to come together as a little community, but this type of stuff that happens pretty commonly, you'll see in these groups where it's, it's not just that, it's the mold, it's the, it's the coming in for showings whenever given no notice. And this happened multiple times, where I was, I, one time, I was sleeping in my rooms in my boxers, and somebody knocked on my door, and it's, and it's people showing my apartment. And I never, I never got notification of that, I actually went, they sent me the patient after they did the inspection. This is the type of stuff that's going on, and occurs all over the place, it's not just around the university, it's all over, and really it's poor people in most of the faculty. So what I would encourage is the state legislature to kind of just please take an issue with this, like, you guys obviously care, and I expect this being unanimous, you guys obviously care about this. What I would please ask is the state legislature, please stop partisan politics and having like this big government mentality. It's what it is, it's the big government, it's just not coming from DC, it's coming from Indianapolis. So this is something that we just don't have the ability to do right now, and please, when you go and vote, make sure you check on where contributions come from, where these people get their money from, because that's where this stuff really comes into the p. So that's what I'll leave you guys with.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Anything else? Do you want to please state your name, correct?
My name is Cheyenne Brooks, I am an organizer with the PSL of Muncy, and I'm just coming to, I think, represent the tenants because we have listed demands in a petition that was circulated at a protest that we did have, I believe that you attended, which we do very much so appreciate. Also, like everyone, we do thank you for putting this forward because it is an issue. So I'm going to go ahead and read the demands and petition that we have, although I know that maybe some of these things aren't in your, like, hands and graphs to accomplish, we do want you to know what the tenants were expecting, what they would like to look forward. As they do see it being the parties Middletown Property Group and the Ball State University in responsibility to this. Middletown Property Group owns B.S.U. Rentals, and both having over seventy-five million dollars in assets, but consistently runs inadequate and dangerous housing. B.S.U. Rentals claims no affiliation or endorsement from Ball State University, yet both parties benefit immensely from the needs that students have for housing near campus or work. Meanwhile, tenants suffer from deadly black mold, constant sewage backup flooding, and long-needed maintenance, which leaves whole rooms inaccessible, and not just inaccessible, but also being locked out of, which is, I don't know, illegal if you're renting this space. Tenants face ever-increasing prices on already higher rents, as well as re-dundied deposits and fees that clearly do not lead to reliable maintenance. We're protesting to demand that the Ball State University and Middletown Property Group accept full accountability for these conditions, tenants, students, and the Muncy community to be, demand clean, affordable, and secure housing. We, you have said before, Mr. Garrett, that obviously reports can be made, and that they can have their housing or unit to be, like, a, you know, assessed. What exactly, if you can, is there a process or something that they can do as they wait for that assessment to happen, and also after that assessment does happen? And mostly, especially when we're looking at more urgent cases, when we are talking about standard sewage, like, coming out of faucets and flooding apartments? and flooding apartments, because these people are also financially unable to obviously go in another place where they would, because no one would live in that kind of situation. What would you, what would be something that we could offer for that? Because that's the situation.
You, the sewage, I would call the health department.
Absolutely.
A hundred percent, I'd call the health department. You can, while you're waiting on the city to come out, which you shouldn't have to wait that long. You should not have to wait more than a couple of days.
Right.
You need to take pictures and documents yourself. And then when we come out, when the city comes out, and they're going to take pictures, and they're going to take documents, they're going to add their list and check it off. And you will get a copy of that. And as they leave, they will take that out, and they will mail you a copy of that. You will have the copy of the pictures they were taking, and you have a copy of the report, if they did. So keep that. And then they have so many days to fix those.
Right.
And then if they don't, then that goes into, then they go into the unsafe housing. And then they go, they report, I believe, I think it's Tuesday mornings at night, I believe, but I'm not sure. But then they report in front of them and have to tell them what they're going to do, when they're going to do it, and what timeframe. So I would document it. Keep your report. Come to the, and when you get that, you're going to know if they fix it or not, or you'll know if they have to be into the unsafe housing. And if they have to be in front of that, come speak. That's open to the public. You come in, you speak on your property, what they're doing, what they're not. Because a lot of times, the tenants don't come. And I know, a lot of them, when I would do walkthroughs, were scared, because I live in a very low-poverty district. I grew up, where I grew up is the neighborhood that I live in. I love it to death. I see that in my neighborhood, and I do not take that lightly. I, we grew up renting houses. I didn't own a house until I got with my wife. It was the first house that I've owned, that we've owned. So I grew up renting houses. I know, I take that very close to my heart. So just make sure that you come and speak up like you guys are now.
If I, if I can, just to continue to address that point of small bit, I know that it is maybe like, this is unclear, you know, because I'm not offering the solution to the problem and asking for the ability to fulfill that. But I guess I am asking, because there is a gray area in which full families, units of families, are living within that standing sewage during that time. They make the report, which is only good and well. And I want, and obviously, that report is very important to making sure that state sees what's happening and how we can address it further. But that family is still in that unit during this time, and they're also suffering out of the conditions that they would be suffering for that full-time. And so far, again, that is just telling me that the report is to go through so that they can then, again, re-address the report in front of a panel to be approved or disapproved. What would they be approved for as the person renting in the situation? And also, what is the, not punishment's not the right one. What's the consequence for the management company that did allow that to happen? Because at that point, are they, obviously, they're not given the unit to like live in. They're not given their rent back, and they're not done all these other things. So what can the tenant do other than make those reports, like especially on their day-to-day lives? Because right now, they're being affected very seriously.
Yeah, we have a city attorney too, and we have a Human Rights Board. And Ms. Vaughn Thompson is phenomenal at what she does. She is an asset that we are glad to have. So I would get with her too. She is out of anybody. After we come out and tag, I mean, this is why Mr. Robinson and Mrs. Arrington are trying to push. Our hands are really tied after that. That's all the teeth we have as the city is tagging and fining. That's, I'm sorry.
Absolutely.
I'm not here, I'm not here to give you any type of misdirection. I'm just trying to tell you the truth.
No, absolutely. And I don't mean it to be potentially. I just, I want to make sure that the tenants understand their full amount of action that they can take going forward, and especially in, like, you know, respond to, respect to you. I don't mean in any type of way, but really, it is only the report that they can do.
Yeah.
In respect of what y'all can do for them.
And just keep doing what you're doing. We, I mean, they would not have got a notice if you would not get out and protest. And we, all nine of us up here, every one of us has an email, every one of us has a cell phone. There's not one of us that will not take your phone call and do whatever we can to help you or help the tenant that you're calling about. So whatever, I mean, we can help you in any way we possibly can. Just please reach out to us with whatever you need. We can point you in the direction that maybe they can point you somewhere, you know, to go to get the answers you need. But we're here for everybody in our city to make sure that they have power that they should, that's livable, and our students that are livable that are here. We just set up here, you know, not too long ago, about, we don't want those kids leaving from Ball State. We want every one of them here. We want them to stay here. We want them to be teachers. We want them to be doctors, police officers, firemen, everything. We want them here. So whatever any, any one of us can do, just give us a call.
I do, I do have one more question. We do have that list of demands and petitions. In y'all's advice and experience, where would you say that we could address that most appropriately? Maybe not to you, would we, to the General Assembly? To like, to...
Yeah, I would encourage you to speak to Representative Arrington. She would, I'm sure, would be more than happy to communicate with you or the family that you're, that you're speaking about. I would like to go to Councilman Aaron Clark, who is on the unsafe building entering authority. If you have anything to mention.
We meet second Thursday, two P.M. in the same room. And to echo Councilman Garrett, the two avenues we have, we are frustrated too because our hands are tied by state code. So we have, we have the housing code that we can follow. So going that route with the inspection, Board of Health, and the Building Commissioner's office, it becomes another long process. So if it is deemed unsafe, it comes before us. We see about eighty-two hundred every month. And then it's up to the tenants, of course, to speak, and then a representative from that management company or the housing owner themselves.
That is to say, very unsettling.
So recently, we've, we don't see a whole lot of management companies that show up, unfortunately. We have the ability to find. And sometimes that raises awareness with the actual homeowner, which many times are out of state. There was something that we dealt with last week, you know, homeowners, you know, in totally different times, and may not even know completely what's going on with day-to-day operations here. Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say, does this fall under the home ownership or under the management company? Because we've been very focused on the management company as a whole, especially with them owning the majority of the rental units in Muncy as a total, under the different like names that they have affiliated with the management company. And so that's, would that be something that could make this process harder for us? Is that the fines would possibly even be going to the individual ownership?
It would go to ownership of, you know, an LLC or, you know, a buying group. So digging into that, you know, through the state and trying to find out who the actual owner is could benefit as well. But I'm thankful that our state representative is here tonight. And I hope, I know you don't meet until early twenty-twenty-three, but if there's anything that you can share with us as committees are being formed at the state level, and hopefully you will sponsor a bill that could get the attention of the state. I think that's when, you know, here we are in September, October. We're a long way away from, you know, our state government convening and reading meetings. So I think we need to keep, you know, moving towards that, but also try to get, you know, as tenants, and as us, as local government entities, organizing a process that allows more, more strength from a local...
I mean, absolutely. I mean, we'll have to be able to respond in a local way with the way that people are day-to-day dealing with these, like, you know, condition stuff.
And we, we all hear you. I know we're all working in our own ways on the different committees and the groups that we serve. It's frustrating. It's a very frustrating...
I think so there is.
Councilwoman Selby, you have something?
Yes, you mentioned earlier, you asked a question about like who would sponsor, who would you send a petition to, what state legislature? I would recommend that you send it to all of them. Send it to all of them, because, you know, you're going to touch people's hearts. And people who probably voted no might vote yes. So I wouldn't just send it to one and don't like stereotype or pre-assume somebody's going to react in a certain way. I think this is a human issue, and it's sad. So I would recommend you send it to every state legislator.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Ms. Brooks, if you would, would you mind emailing the petition and the list of demands that you have, that you read? Would you mind emailing those to myself or the entire council? Would you just email it to me? I'll forward it?
Yeah, and I have to print it out. The person actually brought it, but I have to...
Oh, you're fine. Yeah, I just want to email that to me. My email is really easy. It's district two, the number two, at cityofmuncy.com.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Vaughn.
The Stilts, go ahead. We've had a couple of people standing in the back for a little while, but go ahead. They're polite.
Mary Stilts, okay. She had mentioned something about restitution. Unfortunately, the state's not going to give her any money. But they might be able to start working with some of the attorneys in Muncy. Maybe find a couple attorneys that would help them and do like a class act and lawsuit, and force these rental companies to give them back their money so that they can move on some of these that are not worth living in. So that was one of the things that I was concerned about. And Branda, you're amazing. It's nice to see somebody else that can sit there and tell what the Building Commissioner can do and the Health Department, because the Health Department can do all that too. I went through that with my mom and my sister, being landlord and tenant. And the roof was caving in. And the Building Commissioner took care of it. Cost about seventy-five thousand dollars, but they got fixed. But my mom never got any restitution from it. She ended up having to move. So unfortunately, a lot of these people are going to have to move. They don't, like they said, they don't have the money. They need to be able to come up with a means of being able to rent someplace else and go out. A lot of these properties are also being gotten on tax sales from people in New York and California. They've never looked at the properties. I've got one right around the corner from me. So it's going to be hard to get the individual owners if you can't find them. I've been going through Beacon Schneider and looking up a lot of them.
Thank you, Ms. Stilts. Mr. Pop, good evening.
Good evening, Councilman. Are we still doing just name or was name and address?
Name.
Andrew Pop. I'm kidding. I don't... You want, you want to count around and go over that?
Or number, yeah.
So my question, it seems the issue of holes here with Middletown Properties and their subsidies. Does the City of Muncy utilize Middletown Properties or any of its subsidies in any manner for properties we've invested in with tax dollars through abatements? Do we utilize any of their services?
I don't believe the City of Muncy contracts with B.S.U. Rentals.
What about Middletown Properties?
Or Middletown, that I can't answer. Okay, question.
It's up to the owner, I believe. It's up to the owner of the building to decide what property management they're going to use. So it's not...
So even if you've got tax payment dollars or, or...
It's up to the property owner. Yeah, yeah. They decide who they want to hire as the property manager.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Sure.
Sir, if you would please identify yourself for the record.
Jacob Thornburg. I've lived in Muncy my whole life. I'm in my mid-thirties now. So I've gone through plenty of rentals through here. I'm currently renting from Middletown. Something that concerns me is the way the lease is worded and all the fees that they kind of just stuff in there. There's one in particular called the redecorating fee. Apparently, that's in lieu of, you know, your standard deposit. Mine was six hundred. I've heard a few other ones. But they told me that they use that fee to fix up things, clean the apartment, yada, yada. The unit I'm currently in, I don't believe any of that happened. My shower, well, first of all, so I have the kitchen, and I'm pretty sure they just got it both pantries. There's a toilet in one, just the toilet. And then the shower is stuffed in another room. There's no light in there, so I have to shower in the dark, which is lovely. Water coming up from my bathroom. There was water coming, because what they've done, and I've seen it a million times. They buy a house, cut it into thirty pieces and then rig each individual place. So I have a neighbor upstairs, and I'm not trying to throw him or her bus or whatever, but his toilet flies. And what's happening is it's coming through my apartment, and I'm pretty sure there was mold there. I did finally get hold of them to come out. They came unannounced. They just cut out the piece, and the maintenance guy, bless his heart, I'm pretty sure he's just a third-party affiliate. He's like, all right, well, I just got to wait on the office to see what to do now. So I just have this gaping hole in my ceiling. But yeah, I don't really have like questions or anything. I just kind of wanted to tell that story. And something I noticed, so I was looking at the census for Muncy, it seems to be like a dwindling of the population. I kind of think that has to do with this. Because there's nothing really left. If you look on like apps or whatever to look for like rental properties, it all goes back to Middletown. There's nothing significantly left in the city. So that's all I had to say about it.
Thank you, Mr. Thornburg. Good evening.
Hi, Sarah Vitale. So most of what I know about landlord and tenant relationships in Muncie, I've learned from the the previous experience of the, what's it called, the John West group, the landlord, yeah, and Seth Rollins. And so I've learned a lot from Seth and I wanted to say one thing that, I want to put a finer point on something that's come out a little bit already. One thing that I've learned from Seth is in this Indy Star article from January twenty-fifth, that there was a bill in the State House that would have put us in step with forty-five other states, such that people could withhold their, their rent. But we don't have that, not because of reasons that are opaque to us, but reasons because we have a Republican supermajority in our state.
Point of origin.
Point of origin.
I can't say that?
Uh, we, yeah, we prefer to keep the political speak out of the chamber.
Okay, so the people who the supermajority, or whatever party, has, has voted in a situation that's unlivable for people in Muncie. And I think that those kind of relationships of causality should be apparent to all of us. We should see what has led the situation to be such that some of our own representatives aren't in the position to even voice our opinions or the positions of perhaps people in Muncie because of how things in the state legislature are related to things that I have.
Good evening.
Good evening, Russ Krasnicki. This is North Wheeling Avenue. I've lived in Muncie or Delaware County for over seventy years. This is unacceptable. What I feel we should do is throw out the City of Muncie, everybody, to protest this. Doesn't matter where you live. And I live, I don't have any of these problems, never had any. But we need to get everybody involved in it and figure out some way to hold a protest that brings notoriety from everyone. Just a suggestion. We can do better than this. Even our hands are tied. We need to let the world know about this.
Good evening, Mr. Miller.
I just want to thank the council for bringing this forward, as has been said from the very beginning. Obviously, with this being a resolution, there's nothing binding here and you guys have stated it very clearly. I think what's important is that people understand that you guys, by doing this, have given the opportunity for people to be heard. And what's important is, as you guys have mentioned, you know, the State House, they, they won't meet until months from now. And so this is the first real time that any of these people, you know, whether one person came tonight or two hundred people came tonight, you guys gave them a chance to be heard on the record in front of a body. And a lot of times that's, people just feel like they can't be heard. They're not being heard. They're making phone calls. They feel like they are hopeless and so they feel as though, you know, they're getting the runaround. Whether they are or not, whether they're fault, whether it's the property owner or the property group or whatever. You know, it's important that these people feel heard and that they have had a chance to feel heard here tonight is important. And, and I mean, I get that there's people that says it's, you know, whether it's, they call it virtue signaling or not. I understand that. I'm not a big fan of things like that. I do believe that this is very important. So thank you guys very much and it is also important to note that as a conservative-minded person, it is the Republican supermajority's fault. So we just need to keep that in mind. Point of origin. The few Democrats that are elected as well, they all suck too. It's all their fault as well.
So my name is Megan Atlas and I live at the quote luxury apartment building at White River Lofts. So before I get into the written remarks that I made, I just want to say there, there is something that y'all can do. The Middletown Property Group feels like they can thrive in Muncie, that they're welcomed here. And that's something that we as a community and you as the city council can change. You can make it known that they are not welcome and that they can't thrive in Muncie and that they don't, and they can't continue to practice these horrible things that they're doing to our citizens. And so don't make them feel welcome here. Don't do everything you can to make sure that they don't take on more properties. Take action. Speak out as council members. If they don't feel like they're welcome here, then maybe they will stop and not more properties. So there are things that you can do rather than, so stop saying there are things you can't do and that your hands are tied because there are in fact things that you can do. You can speak. So back to my written remarks. So I actually just moved here several months ago from Washington DC, where the city highly favors tenant rights. And so moving here, it is quite the opposite and something I'm very struggling with. So I know our problems at White River Lofts are very minor compared to the rest of everyone else's problems in their houses. We're not experiencing feces coming from the toilets and black mold all over the wall, or I should say mold that we can see as of today. So as I was saying, I moved in in late May to an apartment that had no air conditioning. And I put in that request and it went unanswered for several days. And although my degrees are in history, I figured how, how to fix the air conditioning problem is a loose wire in the electrical socket. And so electrical engineering is not in my wheelhouse, but I figured out how to fix it. And I have not had, or I barely have hot water since the day I moved in until, it's still going on today. And no matter how many times I have complained to management, they don't believe me. They have sent out plumbers and they have said that they have tested the hot water and that it tests within the proper range. I don't know what that means, but maybe they're testing at three in the afternoon when no one's taking showers. That's not the proper time to test. I also have to run my water for twenty to thirty minutes just for the water to get somewhat warm for me to take a decent shower. And once that warm water hits, it lasts for about five minutes and then it goes back to being cold. So I've been dealing with that for more than three months. And their response is it's going to take a while for some warm water to get to your apartment. Well, what am I paying fourteen hundred dollars a month for for this luxury apartment building? Additionally, in mid-July, we had a rainstorm. A rainstorm. Not a hurricane, not a tornado or anything. And yet many of the residents, including myself, had water coming from the ceiling and water coming from the air vents. From a building that was built, what, a year ago? So I was concerned that there's mold behind one of my walls. Again, mold that we can't see. So I put in that request and that request has gone unanswered until a text I got today saying that the contractors are coming out to look at the recent water damage. Well, Middletown Properties and I have a different understanding of the word recent means. Recent to me does not mean two months ago. So I asked for the wall to be cut open to see if there's mold behind that wall and it's taken two months to do that. So the point that I'm making is, and additionally, they are unable to actually manage about a dozen covered parking spaces. They have no idea how to assign covered parking spaces to residents. They have no idea how to do that. They don't know how to make an Excel sheet. They don't know how to do any of that. So if they can't manage twelve covered parking spaces, how are they able to manage a fifty-plus unit apartment building? The answer is they can't. So I ask you again, what am I paying fourteen hundred dollars a month for for a luxury apartment building? It's not luxury. So I am really asking you to not let this company thrive because they are the most incompetent people I have ever come across. I have lived my entire life on the East Coast, fourteen years in DC and I grew up in Connecticut. I've lived in many apartment buildings, luxury apartment buildings. This is not luxury. So please do your part. Do not let them continue to thrive. Speak out against them. Shut them down.
That's right.
Thank you.
Take just a couple more comments. I think we're all in agreement on this resolution and the problems that it did face. So I'll take two more comments and then we're going to move on.
Brian Shaw, City Council, East Washington Street. So what, just, that was a memory point. So White River Lofts, if that's a problem, I'm pretty sure that they got a tax payment to this thing, right?
I see quite a bit more of these.
So you need to start baking in some rules to these tax payments, right? You can do that. Either, you, if, if you're giving them money or giving them a rebate or something.
Well, the tax payment goes to the owner of the building. In this case, White River Lofts is owned by W S Properties and, yeah. But I completely believe that.
If someone has to all of a sudden pay a lot more in taxes, oh, I might hire a different management company, right? So that's where you do it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. If you would please identify yourself for the race.
Jeff Hager. This is a aha moment for everybody here. I just want to bring some handouts and handout to the board on a article five years ago. This is not individual owners that there's an issue with. There's an issue with the city properties that the city owns, Muncie Housing Authority being one of them. Also, the county properties. This is citywide. It's not just individual owners. The handout I was going to give you does not mention the person's name. And there's a reason for that. Cause of confidentiality. But the person has asked me to come and speak. He did take on the city and he won. He didn't use an attorney because no attorney would take it. And then the city didn't accept the judge's ruling. So they filed with the Indiana Court of Appeals. The Indiana Court of Appeals only hears one percent of the cases that are given to them. So the fact that a little tenant dispute gets the attention of the Indiana Court of Appeals, but it was up against the largest law firm here in Muncie. And they got beat there also, three to nothing. So the city waited eight months, went at him again. This time, they found a friendly judge, one who swore in the mayor. But the judge didn't find that as a conflict of interest and evicted the person based on fees that they could not prove in court. And from what I, the person had told me was, the fees seem to be geared towards white residents, white tenants. Black tenants were being given vouchers to go to houses. The white tenants had ten days and you're evicted. During the course of that, uh, the, the court, during the course of that going on, the opposing party presented photographs of the sheriff's department watching them change locks and locking the person away from their property. Not once, twice. And to this day, six years later, they still have his property. The person was also certified in Fair Housing through Yvonne's program. The person went to Yvonne three different times before, before he won the case and was told she couldn't help him. Now, when you sit here and say, go to the human rights, go to the building commissioner, I'm sorry. I sadly agree, disagree with that because if that was a solution, we wouldn't have the issues. What I think's going on, there's, those are roadblocks in the system. Whether you agree with it or not, you can look at the complaints and they're numerous and they keep getting bigger and bigger and bigger. During the course of, um, the case that went on through the court, that individual was able to find out that the housing authority misappropriated one and a half million dollars of HUD money. They also collected over ten thousand dollars from poor residents. Where'd that money go? And then after he won the case, the mayor, within two months, he gets an eviction notice. Ten days and you get out.
Park. I said, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do want to, and I had forgotten I had this, so I do apologize to the council, but I did receive an email from Melissa Bass, who, as many folks that have followed this know, she's really been the catalyst for organizing a lot of these folks. I will submit this for the public record, so I'll submit this to Lacy, but, and I'm going to read it, but I'm not going to read all of it, but I am going to summarize. And she says, first and foremost, I want to extend my greatest gratitude to members of the city council for allowing us the opportunity to bring these matters to the forefront. I appreciate every single action that has been taken or will be taken to assist the community in dealing with these issues. This is a horribly complicated situation where we all want to immediately remedy this situation and cannot. It is so heavily entrenched in the community and so fast, there is no easy resolution. The frustration and anger that comes from being subjected to having to live in these conditions is a crushing weight on so many of our fellow citizens. While we all debate about what is legal or not, we have children who are also living in this foreign situation. Health and safety hazards are a non-negotiable thing. We will not compromise on that. So I ask each of you to pick up the phone and make every call you can make. Pick up your pen and write every letter you can. I know there are restrictions and boundaries at play here. I'm simply asking that each of us, as a community, do everything in our individual fields of power to have these companies held accountable and for the people to receive the assistance they need to have affordable, safe housing. When you go home tonight and cuddle with your pets and children, please think about the college student who has no water or heat. Think about that mother that doesn't have a working fridge or stove to feed her kids. Think about that elderly or disabled person that can't even get around their house because it's falling apart around them. This could be the catalyst for the community to put all differences aside and unite for a just cause. So let's make that happen because it is long overdue. Thank you for your time and consideration. And again, that is Melissa Bass and was submitted to me by email. And you don't need to grab it right now. I want to make sure you have that to include in the minutes and on public records. So thank you all very much that have come here this evening to speak. We'll go roll call.
Mr. Andrew.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Mr. Overby.
Yes.
Mr. Dishman.
Yes.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Polk.
Yes.
Mr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Selby.
Yes.
Mrs. Rock.
Yes.
Nine, yes, it's very good.
Thank you all very much. Is there any other business? Is there any other business from the council?
Thank you. I just want to say I want to thank the council president for allowing me to share three announcements. I was cornered at an event and I promised I would share there again, so. Ms. Mark Danner wanted me to let you know that the fall twenty-twenty-two Muncie yard is October sixth, five through eight at our work. It'll be at Cannon Commons Downtown. All artwork is less than forty. Gathering Race, Grace of Peace Culture, three hundred South Madison Avenue, every Sunday. They're inviting the public to come join us, join them for indoor seating, for a free community meal every Sunday at three. And Muncie Community Schools and the Community Engagement Council is hosting a golf outing October seventh to address the issue of absenteeism and drunacy that has become an issue for the schools and needs to be addressed. Information and more pamphlets are with Lacy, so please take a copy, share it on your post and support MCS. I appreciate you. Thank you.
And if you have a thing you'd like to promote, reach out to Rose Selby. Thank you, councilwoman Selby. All worthy, worthy of this to promote. Brian, is there anything else from the council and other business? Brian Shaw. Good evening, Mr. Shaw.
Hello, again, Brian Shaw.
If you would, please try to limit your comments to around three minutes.
I will try my best.
Thank you.
Okay. So, last time I was here, I mentioned Beyond I Can parked a van in the overflow lot by a quarter stoop thirty yards, and they lost a catalytic converter that someone stole, right? Well, recently, I was victimized myself. Another catalytic converter, but someone, I have a vehicle, hooked a hole in my gas tank on my truck. Eighteen hundred dollars worth of damage. Still fighting with insurance to take care of that. Many of us in the neighborhood there have been sent to park in that overflow lot. They allow it. They say it's fine, just not in the main lot. However, I cannot monitor the vehicle, because the house I live in right now has no off-street parking. Off-street parking is limited on East Washington Street to the south side, right? So, you can park on one side of the street. I would very much like to park on both sides of the street, so I can park right in front of the house, have my front door camo pointed exactly at my vehicle, and protect my asset. I do understand that the Board of Works has an option where you can request parking spots on the street, but I didn't know. I have other neighbors who have also expressed an interest in having parking on both sides of the street. They recently repaved that street after all the sewage work that was done. It hasn't been restrikt yet. I'm wanting to try to act quickly before they restrikt it, so it doesn't become an issue. I know that the council passes ordinances for stop signs and things like that, but I don't know about the parking on both sides of the street. If that's a council thing or if it's just strictly Board of Works. And if it is, I can follow up with that.
You know, and I'm going to write you an email address for the city engineer. That would be my first recommendation, would be to speak to the city engineer, Adam Leach. And I'm going to write his email down for you. Reach out to him. That would be your best first contact, I think, to go through the street department and also the Board of Works as part of, you know, they all run together. Ultimately, yes, it would be approved by us, but I think that would be a great start.
Related to that, you know, I don't know who did it to Beyond I Can, who did it to us, my wife and I. But we always have had a problem with the the Muncy Inn, right? Does some certain tenants cause problems? Go through the neighborhood, steal things, et cetera. And we are trying our best within East Central to better these old historic homes, improve the values. Improving the values does what? It provides better property taxes, which allows you to increase budgets when you have higher property taxes, right? Looking at the Muncy Inn and what the most recent purchase prices have been, the assessment is way off. If you compare all of the residential properties to what we have paid for houses in that neighborhood, what they are assessed at, right? I feel that, I know it's not your job. You're not the assessor's office, right? But you are a governing body that does do something with those tax dollars. So, I would encourage each and every one of you to do what you can to put pressure on the Delaware County Government, the assessor's office in particular, to look at that property and other properties that are under assessed, that are problems in neighborhoods, right? That are dragging down property values, right? We have someone in the neighborhood that's going to be selling a house pretty soon and moving out because of problems like this. That's concerning, right? Someone who came from out of this state, out of the state, came here, and we were getting new money for the community. They're abandoning ship, right? I don't have to live in Muncy, because I work for a company based in Boston. I work from home. I believe, but I choose not to. I want to see change. So, whatever you can do to help facilitate those changes, greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. How do you go on? You spoke earlier. Did you want to speak again, or?
Well, you know, I think I probably need to come up there.
You're fine. Come on up. You signed up.
Well, I'm sorry. I was discussing the issues as far as the, you know, invasion of privacy and those sorts of things. You know, with the bogus fees and things, I was, I lost my son, my youngest son that had a drug overdose on May the second. I went to the S U Reynolds, them town properties, to pay my rent on the third of May. I was forced to sign my lease for July of this year, for my yearly lease. At that time, I wasn't sure where, you know, where I was going to be or anything. I turned in a thirty-day notice onto my purse to vacate my property. They are trying to get me for a tenant's gift, all kinds of extra fees, over three thousand dollars the day after I moved out on August the second. They took my damaged deposit, which was never paid to them. It was paid to the previous owner that I had moved into in two thousand and eighteen. It wasn't a redecoration fee. It was a damaged deposit. Right now, they have like three more days for the forty-five day period within that lease to write those. I don't know if this has anything to do with what we're trying to write here now or not. But as far as, you know, they were charging people bogus fees and stuff, late fees every time they turn around. You know, it's really uncalled for. I, you know, I was in shock and stuff. My son died. They, I locked myself out of my apartment, had to have the maintenance people come and let me in twice. They charged me seventy-five dollars per charge. It actually happened three times during that period of time. So, you know, I'm still in that process of dealing with not even being able to grieve the loss of my son, a sister in Kentucky two weeks after that. You know, the fact that I moved out because I wanted to move, not because I was forced out at that time by them. But they're not wanting to honor the notice that I gave them for the thirty-day move-out.
Can I, could you give me your phone number before you leave today? And I'm going to try.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Selvin.
Thank you.
Hang in there. Tilbury?
Nope.
Nope. Mary Stoops? Uh, I don't know how to pronounce that.
Anyway, I just want to remind people, if they do have a problem with their state legislators, it is time for election. Make sure you're all registered to vote and vote appropriately. I'm not saying whether you vote for this party or that party, but take into consideration what's been said in here and vote for the right, right, wrong party or somebody different to make a change. Maybe these people that's coming up will make the change in the right direction, so, I'm sorry.
So, now we start voting for voices, start voting for people?
Yes.
Exactly. Vote for the person. Let's make the change. Register to vote. You can vote November eighth.
Thank you, Mr. Burger.
Andrew Pop. I'm sorry. This was going to be so short. Andrew Pop. President Robinson, you said these were going to be livestreamed. You gave potential dates. You didn't allow all the comments. That wasn't me.
Yes.
All right.
Perfect.
Moving forward. Listening to that last gentleman spoke on the White River Lollap properties that a large sum of tax dollars and tax abatement money was given to. You know, the city is doing massive efforts to bring in residents. This gentleman had come from DC. I'm not saying he was a part of that drive or not. I don't know. But they are working actively to bring people in that work remotely from particular areas. We're putting them in these places. We're getting ready to start phase two of this project, giving all of this money with no condition on it by a property, to a property management company who's taking over, of course, by way of the owner, that is doing nothing. This same property management company has the Marcus O'Madison project with tax abatement dollars and public funds, and will probably end up doing nothing. They own a vast majority of the rental properties through their Middletown properties and their subsidies. And we have the ability to do nothing other than stop giving these folks tax abatements and tax dollars. It's on you guys with the Tax Abatement Committee, on you guys who vote, and that's every one of you. And listen, I make no forms about it. I have relationships with a lot of you guys up here, from former teachers to a man who stood in my wedding. It is on all of you to do this. Thank you.
Thank you.